Okay. Good evening, I'd like to call to order the council meeting of August fourteenth.
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Cost. Councilmember Spatafor. Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Wood.
Here.
There are six members present at quorum, councilmembers Garza and Spitzley are absent.
And later in the evening, we'll be taking their excused absence, but both of them do have an excused absence for this evening. With that, we have meditation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Is there anyone that someone would like us to remember at this time? Okay, if we could all rise, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Cost.
I just wanted us to think about and remember the folks that have been struck down with this recent gun violence that we've seen in our city. We've lost lives and people have been wounded, so I would like to keep them in our thoughts.
Thank you very much. Thank you. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have for your approval the July tenth and July twenty-fourth council proceedings.
With that, Councilmember Hussein.
I would move the council proceedings for July tenth and July twenty-fourth as presented.
Have a motion. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Pass unanimously.
We are to special ceremonies and presentations. We have a tribute in recognition of West Junior High School reunion.
Councilmember Brown, I think you have some guests here.
Yes, thank you, President Wood. If I can get everybody from West Junior down here.
If you could come down into the well area. I'm down there in spirit as a West Junior graduate, so.
Oh, really?
Oh, yes.
Thank you, ladies, for being here. Yeah, so we're very honored to tribute West Junior today. I'll probably read some of this and let you ladies speak if you would like to. But we want to provide this tribute to you. Whereas West Junior High School was designated by the Board of Education as a institute of learning on the city's west side, West Junior held honors for sports, journalism, music, and community service until its closing in nineteen sixty-nine. And whereas past students of West Junior High are proud to be remembered as the Cowboys and Cowgirls and will continue to celebrate having fun and remember their days at West Junior High School. And whereas on August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, they will honor and salute the legacy of Lawrence R. Davis for his vision for a reunion of all former students that attended West Junior High, where past students can cherish the memories of friendship, courtship, sportsmanship, and accomplishment. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Lansing City Council hereby recognize Lawrence R. Davis on his vision to reunite former students of West Junior High School and thank those students for their faithful dedication and tribute to West Junior High School. And with that, I'll make a motion.
All right, we have a motion on the tribute. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously.
Congratulations. And I'll let you ladies introduce yourselves.
On behalf of the West Junior Reunion Committee, I want to thank you for giving us this resolution. It means a lot. And my name is Barbara Davis, and I want to say, on West Junior, on to victory!
My name is Anita Smith, and I'm also a Cowgirl of West Junior High School. And Barbara and I have been working side by side for the last thirty years on these reunions, and we're going to keep on going.
Thank you.
Okay, our next special ceremony is a presentation on obsolete property rehabilitation act district and certificate for Homes on Homes LLC property at two thirty South Home Street.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, I believe we have him here to do a presentation today. If you guys can step into the front here, make sure your mic is on. Thank you so much for being here.
Make sure the green light is on in front of you. Okay? Thank you.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. My name is Simon Vregis, Development Projects Coordinator with the Lansing Economic Development Corporation. I'm joined here today with Ms. Farren Forsberg, who is the owner of the property. And so if you can.
Councilmembers, in your packet, you have the PowerPoint. In your red folders. Thank you.
Get the slides on the screen.
City TV, are they ready? There we go. It just came up, and then it went away. Now it's up again. Thank you.
All right, and we're here to discuss and present on Unity Apartments and the Oprah request for the property located at two thirty South Home Street, Lansing, Michigan. First, want to begin with an overview of what is in Oprah. Then I'm going to dive into an overview of the project, then explain some details of the request for your consideration, and then ultimately talk about the impacts to the City of Lansing taxes as a result of this development. So what is in Oprah? And Oprah relates to Public Act one forty-sixth of the year two thousand, and it's named the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act, or Oprah for short. This provides a tax incentive that encourages the development of contaminated, blighted, or functionally obsolete buildings. It involves two steps. First, the establishment of an obsolete property redevelopment district, and then second, the approval of an obsolete property redevelopment exemption certificate. These items can be done simultaneously, which is what we're doing here today. So step one, the district. The governing body of a qualified local unit of government may establish an obsolete property rehabilitation district on its own initiative or upon written request by at least fifty percent of the owners of the property within the proposed district, which Ms. Forsberg has requested. And then next, written notice of a public hearing is provided by certified mail to all the owners of real property within the proposed district. The next step is for the governing body to hold a public hearing, which you are here for today. After this, the governing body adopts a resolution establishing the district and the determination that it meets the requirements under legislation. And a district may include one or more parcels, and a district allows property owners to apply for a certificate. The district itself does not provide any tax benefit. And then step two, the certificate. An owner of an obsolete property within a district will file an application for an obsolete property redevelopment exemption certificate with the clerk of the local government unit. That includes the details of the project. Again, Ms. Forsberg has filed this with the city clerk. Next, the governing body will hold a public hearing, and after which, the local unit of government shall by resolution approve or deny the application for the certification for up to twelve years. Once approved locally, the application and resolution are sent to the State Tax Commission, or STC, and they have sixty days to approve or deny the request. And ultimately, the STC is responsible for the final decision and issuance of all certificates. The tax incentive, if this certificate is issued, freezes the taxable value of the building at the current value for all local property taxes for up to twelve years. School operating and state education taxes are not abated as part of this Oprah. Some of the benefits of an Oprah is that encourages the development of blighted and obsolete commercial properties into vibrant commercial, residential, or mixed-use projects. And over the long run, an Oprah increases tax revenue and reduces threats to public health through environmental contamination remediation, attracts people to the City of Lansing, increases adjacent property values, and ultimately creates jobs as well. So the project for your consideration is located at two thirty South Home Street, Lansing. And on the map here, as you can see, it is halfway between East Michigan Avenue and East Kalamazoo Street, just south of Sparrow Hospital. More specifically, it's on the corner of South Home Street and Prospect Street. The property used to be the Unity Spiritual Church until twenty nineteen, where a fire occurred in the building, and the property was purchased in twenty twenty-one. The proposed development is a six-unit apartment building consisting of two studio units and four one-bedroom units, and one of these six units will be ADA compliant, featuring a wheelchair-accessible ramp. Additionally, the apartments will have rental rates up to eighty percent of area median income, and the proposed development will be an interior build-out of the property, maintaining the structure and character of the building. Additionally, the owner has signed the Universal Development Agreement. And here we can see a rendering of the proposed development, as you know, again, maintaining the character and structure of the building, and each unit having its own separate entrance. So this property has received a statement of obsolescence, and it has been determined to be functionally obsolete. As a result of the fire, the interior of the building has been gutted, leaving just a shell of the former building. And on April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, the city assessor conducted a walkthrough of the property and determined the building to be functionally obsolete due to the former use and design of the structure, as well as the absence of heating, adequate plumbing, electricals, and weakened brick walls as a result of the fire. So the request for your consideration, the owner has requested a certificate for the length of five years to support the development of this functionally obsolete property. The total taxes abated over the five-year life of the certificate is estimated approximately fifty-four thousand dollars. Of this fifty-four thousand, twenty thousand is approximate City of Lansing's portion of that abatement, and the remaining thirty-four thousand is the other local taxing jurisdictions' portion of that abatement. And the impact to the City of Lansing taxes. So currently, the property is generating two thousand dollars in property taxes for the city and zero dollars in income taxes. Now, income taxes are projected to increase to three thousand dollars once the property has been developed in year one. This is calculated by taking the six units, each with an estimated income of fifty thousand dollars, so three hundred thousand dollars total, multiplied by the one percent City of Lansing income taxes, so three thousand dollars. And this is a one hundred and fifty percent increase to total taxes from the two thousand dollars that the property is generating currently. The property will generate these income taxes over the next five years of the abatement, as well as beyond the abatement once it expires in year six and beyond. With regards to property taxes, again, currently, the property is generating two thousand dollars, and with the Oprah, the property is projected to still pay the two thousand dollars over the life of that incentive through years one through five. And then afterwards, in year six and beyond, there'll be an increase to property taxes in the year after expiration to sixty-three hundred dollars. And that is a forty-three hundred dollar increase, or an increase of two hundred and fifteen percent of the current property taxes. Overall, the project is projected to increase total taxes to the City of Lansing from two thousand dollars to ninety-three hundred dollars, a three hundred and sixty-five percent increase to the City of Lansing. I'm going to pass it off to Ms. Forsberg.
Thank you, Simon. Hello, my name is Farren Forsberg, and I'm the owner of the proposed Unity Apartments project located at two three zero South Homes in Lansing. I've lived in greater Lansing area my entire life, and I'm working towards being a part of creating quality housing in Lansing. The proposed Unity Apartments project is a redevelopment. The building was previously the Unity Spiritual Church, which was damaged by a fire in two thousand nineteen, as Simon had mentioned. I purchased the property in twenty twenty-one, and since then, I've been working on repurposing the building into six residential rental units. Each tenant will have their own private entrance into the unit, as well as a private storage space that will be located in the basement of the building. When the building sat vacant for two years, I saw an opportunity to transform this obsolete building into housing. As a local owner, I will continue to be a good steward of the community, and I will be hands-on with the property management of proposed Unity Apartments. And I thank you all for your time tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions from councilmembers? Any questions from councilmembers? Yes, Councilmember Jackson.
You mentioned that for two years it sat vacant, and then you thought that would be a good idea to do an apartment. What did you purchase it for initially?
Initially, it was to repurpose it into residential rental units. That was my initial purpose of the property.
Did you know the condition of the obsolete nature of the property?
I did. Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions? My only other, if you could please make sure that council gets a copy of the development agreement, the Universal Development Agreement, that is not in our packet.
Yep, make that happen.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Then we want to thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you.
Okay, and I believe we are now, we have two people slated for appointments, so we can get them sworn in, so we're going to proceed to items seventeen and eighteen on the agenda.
Councilmember Hussein.
Sure. So the first appointment that we are considering is for Sharon Cibbles as an at-large member of the Board of Review for a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. For folks that don't know, this is a three-member board, and they take a look at property tax appeals, essentially. In any event, we did have Ms. Cibbles in, she's coming up right now, into committee of the whole. She spoke to us a little bit about her professional background, personal background, and reasons for wanting to be on this board. She's lived in the city since nineteen ninety-six. She is currently a third ward resident. She's retired from the state of Michigan, where she served as both an IT specialist and IT supervisor. She is a long-term member of the Lansing NAACP and works closely with senior citizens at her church. You say that many of the folks that she works with actually ask questions regarding their property taxes and things like that, and that actually generated some measure of interest with regard to this particular board. This was her first choice, which we always love, being able to position people on their first choice. She did reference in her resume, not her resume, sorry, her application analytical and problem-solving skills, attention to detail, and interpersonal communication skills as being traits that she would bring to the position. So with that being said, I would move the resolution.
We have the resolution before us. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. Sharon, if you could come down into the well. The clerk will swear you in. If you could come to the microphone and look out at everybody.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of board review member.
Of the office of board review member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And as she's signing that, Councilmember Hussein, if we could go to the next appointment.
Sure, so this is an appointment for Mr. Dale Schrader. This is actually for an at-large member of the Board of Water and Light, Board of Commissioners. There are four ward reps, sorry, positions on that particular commission, and then there are four at-large positions. Mr. Schrader was also with us in committee of the whole, talked to us a little bit about his background. He's lived in Lansing since nineteen ninety-eight. He currently resides in the fourth ward. He has served as president of the Walnut Neighbor Organization and Preservation Lansing. He is, or has been, a member of the Mayor Sustainability Commission as well. We know that he's worked tirelessly, he spoke a little bit about this in his interview, but tirelessly to advance preservation, conservation in the area. It really works to enhance the City of Lansing through placemaking projects, historic preservation of homes, things of that nature. Professionally, Mr. Schrader did detail his thirty years of experience of sales of industrial piping systems, pumps, pollution control equipment, and groundwater and soil remediation systems. He talked a little bit about how he actually started his own business back in nineteen ninety-one, where they focused on emergency environmental cleanup, things of that nature. And over the course of some, I think it was twenty-four years, he actually was able to hire on eighteen different people as part of that particular company. His first choice for appointment was the Lansing Board of Water and Light Board of Commissioners. He, I want to clarify, he talked about this being an exciting time for the board. And when I heard him say that, I believe he said that it was an exciting time for the board because there's so much discussion and effort around renewable energy at this time. With that being said, he was asked whether or not he would ever consider sale of our public utility to a private company. And although he said never say never, he said he's certainly not supportive of that now, and actually referenced the utility as a major economic development tool, and specifically, he referenced the fact that we were, or I should say that it was a major reason why we were able to secure our electric vehicle battery plant. So with that being said, I would move the resolution.
We have a motion on the resolution. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. Dale, if you could come down? If you'd like Ann to come down with you, that's fine. Since she'll be in it for the long haul as well.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of board water and light member.
That I will.
Of the office of.
For the office of board of water and light member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
You could go and get signed in. Make it official. Thank you.
And we are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Comments by councilmembers. I see Councilmember Cost, Councilmember Jackson, and Councilmember Hussein.
Thank you, President Wood. I just wanted to remind everybody that ENO will be holding its annual Summer Fest, August twenty-sixth. This is going to be at the Frandor Parking Lot, Sears, the old building that was Sears this year because of the work that's going to be done on Michigan. So again, that's August twenty-sixth, eleven AM to ten PM. It's going to be a whole lineup of music, food, shops, community. So if you have a chance to stop by, we'd love to see you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. Just wanted to invite everybody to our fourth ward constituent contact meeting every fourth Saturday of the month at Gregory's, which is located at twenty-five-ten North Martin Luther King Boulevard. It'll be ten o'clock on August twenty-sixth. That's the fourth Saturday. Look forward to speaking with anybody, talking about anything City of Lansing related.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes, just two things real quick. The first piece is that we have not had a third ward constituent contact meeting over the last couple of months. We always, I should say, historically have recessed in July, and then we had some venue issues in August. So we wanted to make sure that you were marking your calendars for the next constituent contact meeting for the third ward that's going to take place on September ninth at ten AM. And although I'm asking you to mark your calendars, I don't yet know the location. There's a possibility that we are actually going to team up with Councilman Garza in the second ward and kind of have a South Lansing constituent contact meeting, where there is no featured speaker, but we just listen to you, your concerns, give you some updates that are critical with regard to South Lansing. Should that happen, we will meet at the Plumbers and Pipefitters Hall. If that does not come to fruition, then we'll meet at our usual meeting location at L. Frieder Schmidt South Side Community Center at five eight two five Wise, sorry, Wise Road. But I'll make sure to update folks in the near future on that. And the other thing is, I want to take the opportunity, I have, in going to different neighborhood meetings and taking calls from citizens across South Lansing, obviously, we have a number of infrastructure concerns, and there are few that seem to rise to the top in terms of volume of calls and concerns at meetings and things like that. So I did reach out to public services. I wanted to thank Mark Lawrence, as well as Andy Kilpatrick, who provided a couple of updates. The first is for Connors Avenue in the Churchill Downs neighborhood. They have long awaited construction, reconstruction of that road that is actually scheduled now to begin on August twenty-eighth, so that's great news. Also, Hillcrest from Wadsworth to Wainwright is scheduled for road construction, or I should say, a road treatment. That's also beginning on August twenty-eighth. We have had a lot of questions regarding Pleasant Grove Road from Homes to Mount Hope. It is in horrid condition. What we're doing right now is we're actually engaging what's called scoping work. So we are, you know, studying the road, we're studying the subconstruct, and at some point, we're trying to, you know, make recommendations as to, or I should say, a determination as to what the best treatment for that stretch of road is. But it really is in kind of the infant stages. So more to come on that. And then the last piece is, we have gotten a lot of complaints about the sidewalk conditions over on Truxton Lane. So there are a number of trees in the right of way that have created quite a bit, I should say, substantial upheaval. People have tripped and gotten hurt and things of that nature. It is on, I should say, we did alert our staff, it's on the to-do list, and it is actually scheduled to be fixed and completed within the next two to three weeks. So I just wanted to provide those updates. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there other council comments? Seeing none.
Thank you, President Wood. Just a couple of things. I want to thank those who participated in the election this past week. We had not a great turnout, but a pretty good turnout for the election, type of election that we had, better than we had four years ago. We had a thirteen percent turnout. Was interesting with all of the new changes that have occurred in election law and our constitutional rights, those who voted, eighty-five percent of the people who turned out actually voted by mail-in ballot or drop-in advance of Election Day. So only fifteen percent of the people who voted actually went to their polling place on Election Day. Interesting trend. It'll be very interesting to see how it bears out in larger turnout elections such as the presidential elections next year. And then I also want to thank Grace Hocking, who's been our intern for the past several months at the council meetings. Tonight will be her last meeting, so we wish her all the best in the future. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If there are any members of the gallery that wish to announce an event, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details of your event.
The Friends of Lansing Historic Cemetery will be hosting its annual service of remembrance inside the Fraternal Memorial Garden at Mount Hope Cemetery on Sunday, August twenty-seventh at three PM. This is a free event, it's open to the public, and it's for anyone who has lost a loved one in the last year and had them buried or interred in the three-city-old cemetery in Severn Green, Mount Hope, or north. We'll have about an hour-long program, and anyone is welcome to attend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other community events? I think we got one more.
Our backpack.
Hello, Erica Lynn, The Village Lansing will be holding a backpack giveaway event in partnership with Laugh Q on Saturday, August twenty-sixth, from noon till three PM or until supplies run out. We are holding a backpack drive currently from now, pretty much until the Friday before. That is at every single Lansing Laugh Q location. So if you would like to contribute by way of a backpack or supplies, hygiene items, things like that, you can drop them off at any Lansing Laugh Q location, or you can message us at The Village Lansing on Facebook, or email us, and we can facilitate some type of pickup or drop-off in that sense as well. But again, the event is Saturday, August twenty-sixth, from noon to three PM or until, you know, supplies run out. Also, if you are a business that would like to do a drive for us, feel free to do so, meaning your office can collect supplies, hygiene supplies, or backpacks, and then donate them to us. If you have a different way you would like to do it. them to us if you have a different way you would like to donate or support. We have Capital Area District Library is going to be having a table in some, you know, events there. We're looking at Waverly Robotics. They're going to see if they have capacity to set up shop that day. So if you have something that would be of interest to youth, you can come and have a table. If you have things that you would like to give away or support, please feel free to reach out to come. The other thing that we're also supporting right now at The Village Lansing, we have two families that have been affected by the recent gun violence that we are supporting. Back to school is a really tough time financially for folks, just in general, but it's also very difficult when you are missing work due to hospital visits or planning a funeral. So if you would like to support those efforts, we have examples of some of the things provided is dinner, like restaurant gift cards, things like that, grocery run. There's always support directly to the funeral home to help ease some of the burden on the funeral expenses, and any other type of grief-related support. So if you'd like to support those efforts, please email me at erica.lynn@thevillagelansing.org or message me on Facebook. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other community events?
And another one coming up.
Hi, I'd like to welcome you all on September 5 at noon to the Capitol, the front lawn with the Rent Is Too Damn High protest. We're very excited. Ryan Cost came out to help with the art build this weekend at the old Otto Middle School, which is now the AC3 Community Center. So we're very excited to have people, we have over 615 people sign up, I believe, the vast majority are Lansing residents, to demand safe, affordable housing, as well as a lift on the 1983, I believe, the 80s, a lift of ban on rent control specifically, hoping that we can update these red tags and housing is a human right. So we hope to see you on September 5 at noon at the Capitol Lawn for the Rent Is Too Damn High protest. You can find us on Facebook, you can Google the protest. We're excited to have you there. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it looks like we've got another.
The People's Council of Lansing has a general meeting this Thursday, 5:30 p.m. If anybody isn't aware of what the People's Council is, we are responsible for bringing the people's voice to this body, working with or against to bring things like accessible meetings that we brought forward, or the warming centers that we've protested for. So outside of that, it's really information gathering, for anybody who's listening. We bring a lot of the information that people don't sit through in these meetings to hear and kind of concise all that down to very, I don't know, palatable or understandable conversation about how we need to be moving forward as a people. We hold those general meetings about once a month, but we also have a discussion group where we talk through procedures on what we're trying to bring for the council to, I don't know, to listen to the people on. So the People's Council, it'll be online. There's a Facebook page called The People's Council of Lansing. Our meeting is this Thursday at 5:30. Again, we've had a lot of traction with the very small amount of people that we've had in there. Bring your time, treasures, and talents into this work and help us get things moved around here in the city.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Looks like that's it. So we are to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters. If you wish to address the city council on any legislative matters, which does include items, the scheduled public hearings, which are items 4th grade, as well as the rest of the action agenda, which is items 9 through 29, please jump up and sign in on the blue sheet in the next 30 seconds or so. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor, sure.
Thank you, council president. A few announcements. One, our Department of Neighborhoods Arts and Citizen Engagement has small cleanup kits for those that want to organize trash pickup. So if you are interested in organizing with your neighborhood to pick up trash on your streets, if you see trash, we'll provide you bags and we'll provide you pickers. And if you contact our Department of Neighborhoods Arts and Citizen Engagement, we'd love to provide it, and we always appreciate folks who are taking care of our city. You can go on the website and get the contact information. I want to alert folks that our police department continues to hire. We have 29 individuals in the academy right now, which is good news. That means we'll have those folks taking open spots on LPD as we have folks retire and to make sure that we're fully staffed by the end of the year. I want to thank our Lieutenant Governor Garland Gilchrist for his joining us at our second-to-last concert in the park over at Francis Park last Wednesday. I also want to thank Representative Emily Devendorf, who also joined us. It was great to see them both there, and I know the folks really appreciated our Lieutenant Governor for being there, especially when the governor could probably hear the music. It was great to see him there. I want to thank everybody that helped with the mayor's senior fair. We had a tremendous turnout. I know Councilman Brown was there, and we appreciate it. I know others wanted to be there but couldn't. But just, we probably had 500 or 600 people there. People were really excited to see each other, to talk, to share issues. So thank you to all the seniors, and thank you to all the staff that planned it. Parks Department, my office, a variety of department directors, very, very successful. Thank you to the school district for allowing us to use Gardner as we do every year. Tremendous. Finally, I would like to address the situation that happened last week with the Lansing Police Department. As has been reported, we had a rash of stolen vehicles recently. A citizen called in a car theft, and our police were dispatched. Officers arrived and made contact with a suspect, and he fled from officers. Those officers called for backup with a description of the accused clothing. A short time later, an officer nearby located a young man wearing identical clothing and detained him. When other officers arrived within minutes, they confirmed it wasn't the suspect, and he was immediately released. This is truly a case of mistaken identity during an active police investigation that was resolved, but I really don't want to downplay any trauma that comes along with being detained by police officers. That is, it's something that can really influence an individual, a young person, and so we don't want to downplay that. I again join with Chief Sosby in offering my apologies to the young man mistakenly identified, as well as to his family. Our police department has provided our social worker and a variety of other services to assist with any trauma that he is facing. They are doing everything they can to show him that it was truly a mistake and to, again, assist with trauma. We know that our police department strives for protection, for perfection in protecting our citizens and in solving crimes, and in this case, they made a mistake and they own it. So again, I want to offer my apologies to the young man who was temporarily detained, as well as to his family, and we'll continue to do what we can to alleviate any trauma as a result. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
And with that, as I indicated, public comment does include items 4 through 29, and the first four are public hearings, or the first five items. We have items 4 and 5 are the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act District and Certificate that we heard a little bit about under the presentation for 230 South Homes. Item 6 is an amendment to Chapter 210 of the Code of Ordinances regarding the uses of city council chambers in the conference room. And we have item 7 is Z-7 2023, a rezon of 3712 South Cedar. And item 8 is a noise permit for work as the CSO 15 South project.
Councilmember Brown, did you have anything to add to the two items on the obsolete property tax?
I do not think they did a great job presenting the information to everyone.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hussein?
Sure. So the amendment to Chapter 210 that was actually introduced back on the 24th, we discussed it at length at that time. It really is an updating of, and enhancing, a clarifying of. And a few examples, as an example, wherever the term council chamber appears, there are now updates to reflect the name change to the Tony Benavides Lansing City Council Chambers. There are some updates to the section on priorities for scheduling, the use of facilities, by clarifying and enhancing the language again. Also updates the section on conditions for use of council facilities by non-city groups, by clarifying that the process doesn't just apply to council chambers, but rather all council facilities, including our city council conference room. It also clarifies that approvals must go through council leadership, that activities in congregation are to happen within the facilities and not elsewhere, and that the organizers are on the hook for city costs such as maintenance and security.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Brown, the zoning for 3712 South Cedar?
Yes, thank you, President Wood. This is to rezone the property from currently proposed rezoning is to permit the use of the property as a vehicle repair facility. The current zoning designation permits vehicle service stations, which limits the type of vehicle work that may be conducted to the property at, to minor repairs, which would include brake and tire replacement, tune-ups, oil changes, and things of that sort, very low intensity. The rezone would allow for the property to now have major repairs, such as collision work, body painting, engine engagement, and other high-intensity repair activities in addition to the minor repairs as well. And so that's what happens.
Okay, thank you. And then last, public hearing that we have on the schedule tonight has to do with the special noise permit. Councilmember Hussein?
Sure, and this might be confusing to some. This is actually the second public hearing we've had on this. So we had our initial public hearing on July 10. However, the notice of the public hearing was not sent to all impacted residents. We had Alec Melvidasen from Public Services in the city operations last month. He talked about a computer glitch that unfortunately resulted in some 473 residences being missed. All those homes, all those individuals have been noticed since, and so tonight, we're going to have our second public hearing.
All right, thank you. And back to the city clerk.
So first, I do want to indicate some written communications that we received. We received four communications opposing the noise waiver, Deb Bauchehy and Peter O'Lilla, one from Jana Nickel, one from Teresa Purvis, and one from Diana Evans. We received one asking just to shorten the hours on certain days from Angela Medzeyar, and then three supporting the noise waiver from Marcy, Ollie, Doug, Laramie, and Michelle Hall. And then we also received communication and support of the rezoning from Stephen Kesto. And our first speaker tonight is Elizabeth Rice, followed by Mike Lynn.
Hello there, I'm Elizabeth. Is this broadcasting? Yeah, okay. Hi, Elizabeth Rice, Westside Neighborhood, Fourth Ward, and I am here to talk about the noise special permit, which requests suspension of the noise standards, as I understand it, so that the construction activities associated with the CSO Combined Sewage Overflow Project can occur on Saturdays from 8 to 4:30, as well as during their normal operating time periods. First of all, I do not know how other neighborhoods might be affected, or how they will experience this, but I can predict with some certainty how the Westside Neighborhood will experience it.
Ma'am, could I have you pull the mic a little bit closer to you? Thank you.
Sure, is that better?
That's better, thank you.
Okay.
Not a problem.
So it's not only a matter of noise, though that certainly will increase, and we do not know to what levels. But there's also the matter of other things that can occur, of course, when you have traffic anytime they want on Saturdays from 8 to 4:30, any Saturday, all Saturdays. It's also a matter of large construction equipment rolling through our particular narrow, curvy streets in our neighborhood. And this is, we have a lot of kids, and I don't see how this mixed use, if you will, is going to work out very effectively. Another aspect is, there's a park, Osborne Park, right next to the staging area for equipment materials. I cannot imagine that's going to be a real good combination there. Also, there's the matter of airborne particulates. I don't know how that's going to work with people out and about, especially, you know, on a Saturday with kids out and about. They're a vulnerable population, and it'll certainly raise more particulates, undoubtedly will do that. So I want to just state my opposition to this whole idea of Saturday use. It's not just noise. It's how will the whole operation affect people on that particular day, 8 to 4:30, anytime the contractor wishes. So anytime on those Saturdays. So I just wanted to say, there's a lot to be concerned about for our neighborhood, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike Lynn, followed by Erica Lynn.
Here to speak on 26 through 29, Human Relations and Community Service Advisory Board. This ain't the time for this. I was there the first day the city attorney came in and explained to HRCS what their charge was. I was surprised that I didn't know what that was, because it could have fielded a lot of the complaints that I get daily and don't know where to take them outside of the administration. And then, when we all sat there and realized what the charge was, the very next meeting, a month later, maybe it was two months later, they came in and tried to switch the whole charge and told them none of that they were responsible for anymore. And some of the things that Brian T. Jackson asked, discrimination, investigating discrimination claims, all these different things. And they're just snatched off of there because they said they don't have an administrative role. Well, there is nobody outside of the city attorney's office to take complaints if you're a citizen. This ain't the time for that. I want to speak on, just real quickly, why we say that. The City of Lansing, first of all, obviously has been sued multiple times for race discrimination. So while they're attacking this outside board, they would absolutely be able to look at this as citizens, it's obvious why they want to attack that and take that ability away. And now they're talking about directing all of that to the HRCS department and under somebody who works for the administration and mayor. The apology on the situation that happened in Waverly Park, if it was the police department's first time doing something like this, I could understand the apology, and we say, oh, you know what, they made a mistake. But that's not true. Over the last five years, they've killed six people, one unarmed inside the jail. Six people have died at the hands of LPD. How many complaints I receive on a daily about VCI, just running over people, you know, stop that light, unmarked cars ravishing, jumping out with firearms? There is going to be an incident involving our police department and our young people in the city, because for whatever reason, the Lansing Police Department believes that everybody that's black or brown is a predator out here. So why would it seem that they come up on a 12-year-old and a parent standing there saying, no, that's my son, and they still have this attitude and this energy? Because even the parent was a predator as far as they was concerned. So it's really unfortunate that the whole world is watching. I'm sitting here, as I'm sitting here, I'm looking at Michael Strahan speaking on ABC this morning about this incident here, and not one person from the council spoke on it. Not one person brought this up. The whole world is watching this. The whole world is watching us. And fortunately for you, mayor, nobody knows of all the things that have took place with the Lansing Police Department. Nobody knows the multitude of things. Nobody knows that the Lansing Police Department is under mandate right now from the Department of Justice. Nobody knows any of this. Nobody knows that the City of Lansing is being sued multiple times and actually owes a million dollars for race discrimination and hostile work environment. Nobody knows all this when they're talking about it. And the only thing we had outside of the mayor's administration to bring this conversation to was the HRCS department, and now that's wiped. Not the time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Erica Lynn, followed by Stephen Kesto.
Erica Lynn, lifelong Lansing resident, and I agree, I echo the sentiments, that it is not the time at all in any way, shape, or form. But in contrast, the way that we have been operating in this city when it comes to issues like this, it is the exact time. And the timing couldn't be even better to suppress the truth, which is what's been happening for the last six years, when it comes to issues like this. So the whole stripping away of the HRCS, all of the clauses and things like that, I can understand a lot of the verbiage. A lot of the verbiage that has been changed does have to do with administrative versus advisory, things like developing, things like creating, things like putting into place. That's fine. I can go with that. But when you start stripping away entire sentences in there that are extremely powerful, such as examine reports of discrimination or prejudice, examine, and if it deems advisable, make public reports on any complaints of discrimination, tensions, or prejudice. discrimination, tensions, or prejudice filed with or referred to it, those are being struck completely. And I would love an explanation from the city attorney's office on how those are not strictly advisory in nature. Explain those sentences. I mean, any English majors here, language, reading, comprehension, those are literally advisory in nature. There is nothing implicit or explicitly administrative about any of that. The worst part about all of this is that you all end up going on to maintain that this board shall advise any official or authority on matters involving civil rights or the violation thereof. You changed that to it shall provide recommendations on matters involving civil rights. How? How can they provide recommendations when they can't even review or examine reports any longer? It doesn't feel like this review that was done, that we all know why it was done and when it was done. It was because people started waking up, because like it was mentioned by Councilmember Spatafor, this has been in place for 20 years. Nobody said anything. It just means that people weren't exactly doing what they were supposed to be doing on this board. And when they started to wake up and realize what they could be doing, squashed. And that's what we're seeing now. So how are they going to provide recommendations? Are the public still able to take complaints of this nature to this body, to this board? Is that going to be made clear to us? The fact that there's a blatant attempt to completely remove duties like this, it is a clear message to us that you're removing a very valuable, somewhat objective, community-based channel that we can go to for things like this. And we're at a time right now where we have a family that's already sought legal counsel for their 12-year-old black child who was racially profiled and wrongfully detained. We have a laundry list of issues like this, and now you're stripping away the only avenue that we have for us as a community to have some type of support and guidance outside of the police department and the city attorney's office.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Stephen Kestrel, followed by Steve Sharak.
Hello, my name is Siven Kestrel, owner of the property located at 3712 South Cedar Street. My family and I purchased this property at the end of last year. We are here to request rezoning of the property to allow a collision shop to operate in our building. This property that we purchased was used for a vehicle repair shop for the last 30-plus years, but was not labeled as a collision shop. It was labeled more of a mechanic shop. We became aware of this fact, that a collision shop requires a different zoning than what was there previously. The collision shop does not produce any more noise, smell, or cause anything. It doesn't really do anything more than what was there before. They might have heavier machinery, but everything's confined to the space that's inside. We worked out, my family and I worked on an agreement with the collision guys, who essentially own and operate nine collision shops in three different states, most of them being in Michigan. The collision guys will take this building, renovate it, and make it a more appealing building on Cedar Street, which we have a good amount of buildings that either need some work on or are abandoned. They plan on doing more work, but waited to see the results of the zoning, once we were notified of the zoning requirements. The building is expecting to get even bigger facelift than it already has received, if and when we get the zoning changed. The building will generate more tax revenue for the city. It's going to bring more business. It's going to give people more options to get their vehicles fixed, if we get this change made. Making this change will also help Cedar Street by removing an older-looking, abandoned building and giving it a more life and more appealing to the neighborhood and the area. Lastly, this place will give people more options for vehicle repairs than already exists in the city. Myself, as the owner of the building, as well as the tenant, we're all willing to accommodate any changes that may need to be made in order to get the zoning changed. So whatever, if there's other recommendations that we need, we're open to have a conversation with any and anybody that's either for or against doing the zoning change.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Steve Sharak, followed by Nick Zandi.
How you guys doing?
I'm the manager of the collision shop, in reference there that Mr. Kestrel just talked about. He pretty much mentioned everything. I was just here, if you guys had any questions, I manage this location in Lansing.
This is your opportunity, though. This will be going back to Development and Planning Committee, and then you can address the committee at that time.
Okay, so you guys don't have questions at this stage?
No, not at this stage.
Okay, thank you then.
Thanks. Next, we have Nick Zandi, and that's the last one.
I'm Neil Zandi, from the Second Ward in the old Everett neighborhood. And I'm here to speak on Agenda Items 11 and 12, specifically workers' compensation settlements. Now, I don't know exactly what exactly the compensation settlement specifically is all about, but what I do know about workers and their proper right to proper compensation is that on the West Coast, in California, there is currently a writers' and actors' strike going on, and it's disrupting productions of Hollywood to the point where Disney's considering replacing them with AI, which all I'm going to say is, machines will not replace us. Hate to sound like a you-know-what here, but still. To say this, I think all workers, regardless of their profession, should have a right to proper compensation for all the work that they have done. Because no matter what job it is, whether it be fast food, retail, or government job, or writing, acting, health professionals, all of them deserve a right to proper compensation. If they're not compensated, how else are they just bound to go on strike at some point? And I do think that workers' compensation is something that should be generally considered. And considering the whole, and adding on to that, people have talked about like the racial profiling stuff that the police has been doing. I mean, for the mayor to just now apologize for the whole mistaken identity thing, it's like, a lot of this stuff has been happening, why is he apologizing now? Why is the police department apologizing now? That's just, that just boggles my mind. It just, like, they wait until now to that specific incident to apologize? Come on, give me a break. It's just downright preposterous that you just let your department get away with a lot of that stuff, and only now, when the curtain falls, suddenly now you have to decide, oh, I'm sorry, this mistaken identity stuff happened with the clothes they were wearing. Come on. This is just very infuriating. Just, you could have apologized for those previous incidents earlier, but you had to wait until now? Come on. This is just very infuriating, and this is why I think there needs to be serious change to our city right now, including our city charter.
Thank you.
Thank you. So on the referral of the public hearings, Items 4 and 5 are the Oprah for Homes on Homes.
I'll go back to the Development and Planning Committee.
Item 6 is the uses of council chamber ordinance.
That'll go back to Committee of the Whole.
Item 7 is the rezoning for 3712 South Cedar.
And that will go back to Development and Planning.
And Item 8 is the noise special permit.
And that'll go to City Operations.
Okay, we are to the consent agenda.
Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, I would, well, first, the consent agenda tonight, sorry, does include Numbers 9, which is a claim appeal, number 1954, for Trey Midatay LLC, for 835, and trash fees at 500 West Willow Street. It also includes a claim appeal, claim number 1955, for Silly Goose LLC, for $625 in trash fees at 1506 Robertson Avenue. Two workers' compensation settlements, a grant acceptance from the U.S. Conference of Mayors Award for the Mikey 23 Foundation, a grant acceptance for financially distressed cities, villages, and townships, grant for violent crime initiative, a resolution of sale of property for vacant Board of Water and Light Parcel in Delhi Township, and then we already moved the tribute. So with that being said, I would move the consent agenda.
We have motion on the consent agenda. All of those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to resolutions for action. We have Item 19, the setting the hearing on a cabaret license.
Councilmember Hussein.
Sure. So we actually addressed this in Committee of the Whole earlier tonight. This addresses, or I should say deals with, a cabaret license that is held by an individual that owns a suite, or I should say leases a suite in Logan Square. Chapter, I'm going to talk about just a few subsections before getting into the actual incident. Chapter 808 of the Lansing Code of Ordinances actually provides for cabaret licenses, and there's a few subsections that are part of that chapter that are relevant here. First subsection, Point 09 speaks specifically to responsibilities of a cabaret license holder. As an example, it does state that after 11:00 PM, all music shall be controlled, so that the sound will not be audible beyond 100 feet of the building in which a cabaret licenses, or a cabaret is located. Subsection Point 10 speaks specifically to maintaining the peace. And it actually requires the licensee to maintain peace throughout the entirety of the premises. Premises is then defined as not only the structure in which the cabaret is located, but also the parking lot, parking facilities, and in any area or surrounding area within 1,500 feet of the boundaries of the lot on which the cabaret is actually located. So with that being said, Subsection Point 08 actually provides for a revocation of a license, should there be violations of any of the subsections of Chapter 808. Calls for a hearing does require that the license holder be given five days of notice of said hearing. The hearing is intended to provide the licensee an opportunity to present evidence and testimony, to challenge evidence and testimony. This is part of the license holder's due process. Designated hearing officers permitted to conduct the hearing, and said hearing officer shall forward to council proposed findings of fact and proposed conclusion, up to and including a recommendation of revocation. Counsel at that point then can decide to either disaffirm, affirm, or modify the hearing officer's proposed findings of fact, and can even actually schedule an additional or a new hearing. With that being said, the issue that is before us tonight actually pertains to a recent mass shooting at the Logan Square on July 30th. The Energy Events Center, in this case, is the cabaret license holder. They hosted a party slash kind of concert in Suite 41A at 222 South MLK, commonly known as the Logan Square. Reports of shots fired came into dispatch at about 1:00 AM. Ultimately, five individuals ranging from 15 to 26 were shot, two of whom were critically injured at that time. As part of the response, we did have 26 officers from the LPD respond, and due to the size of the crowd and what was referenced as unruly behavior, we did have to request and receive mutual aid from adjacent jurisdictions. As part of the investigation, we did recover eight firearms, and there were more than 70 spec casings found in the parking lot, along with liquor bottles and other evidence of on-site consumption, such as police body cam footage and the like. The documents provided to council by the chief of police, he also addressed the age of many of the attendees and issues surrounding potential access to alcohol and the like. So per the resolution that is in front of us, and also discussed earlier in Committee of the Whole, the hearing will be set for August 4th, 1:00 PM, here, 10th floor, in the Tony Benavidez City Council Chambers. The hearing officer, per the resolution, will be Elizabeth O'Leary. And the only other thing I wanted to address, there was a comment about Logan Square ownership, and the fact that there is a broader issue that needs to be addressed by the city, and I couldn't agree more. I do want to clarify that we have filed suit in Circuit Court, asking the court to declare Logan Square a public nuisance. And my understanding is that there is a subsequent motion being considered, where we would ask the courts to appoint a receiver. So with that being said, I would move the resolution.
Thank you. Council, or...
That could be.
...city attorney.
Just one correction.
Would you make sure your mic is on? Thank you.
We did ask for a receiver in the initial pleadings. The motion's being prepared today and to brief, so those will be filed, and it will be an amendment to the complaint will be filed this week.
And just for clarification, before I open it up for any comments from council members, council will not participate in that hearing. The hearing will be handled by the hearing officer, and then their recommendations come back to us. So they will be handling that. Having said that, we have a motion on the table. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate my concerns about having Ms. O'Leary as the hearing officer. Not that I think that she has any problem or inability, but that she's a city employee who is our contract officer, who negotiates with unions, including the police union, and is basically subordinate to department heads and ultimately the administration. And I think since we're able to appoint anybody just out of precaution, I would rather see us appoint somebody not tied to the city, who can be completely independent, or at least have a perception to everybody else as completely independent. So that's just my reason for the no vote on this.
Are there any other comments? And again, as I had said during the Committee of the Whole, our last hearing that we had before us, Nick Tate, who was in the same role as labor negotiator, was the one who held that hearing as well. So this is not unprecedented. So with that, all those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The resolution passes 6-1. 5-1. I had an imaginary person here. Sorry about that.
All right. Item 20, a liquor license for CP Lansing Red Cedar LLC.
This should also be Councilmember Hussein. It says Spatafor, but it should be Hussein.
Sure. And it is, so it is all in the title. So this is a liquor license, CP Lansing Red Cedar LLC, request for a B hotel license, specially designated merchant, Sunday sales, AM/PM, social district entertainment, additional two bars, SDM Sunday sales permits at 3150, 3160, 3170, East Michigan Avenue. And of course, this pertains to food and beverage concessions at the newly constructed AC Hotel by Marriott, as well as the Hyatt House Hotel, which are part of the Red Cedar development. The only thing I think I would add is that this does fall within an existing social district, and that there will be an amendment forthcoming to the district to add CP Lansing that will be reviewed by city council for later consideration. With that being said, I'd move the resolution.
All right, we have a resolution before us. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously.
Item 21, business license appeal for transient merchant license.
Councilmember Spatafor, I now get you.
So the item before us is the denial of a transient merchant license. It was denied on the basis of a criminal record existing on the applicant, and the application stated there was no, there were no offenses or convictions. We had the hearing this afternoon, and the committee decided to vote to uphold that denial.
All right, we have a motion before us. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Councilmember Spatafor.
The next item is a, Items 22 and 23, well, separate, no, they're separate. 22 is the accepting the jurisdiction and control of the portion of the Bolter Drain. Bolter Drain is on the south side, north of I-96. It was part of the, it was annexed into the city in the 1960s. It is a drain that is currently tended and owned by the Drain Commission. Our Office of Public Safety has encouraged us to take control of this, as it will result in lower costs. The Drain Commissioner has been looking at, apparently, revitalization of that project on the scale of Grossbeck and Red Cedar. So if we do take it over, we will be in charge of the maintenance, to our standards, but not to the standard of fountains and things like that that you see going on at the Red Cedar. So we recommend as a committee to accept the jurisdiction, and I would move the resolution.
All right, we have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions? Yes, Councilmember Hussein.
I think the only thing I would add is that there was a discussion, and I think Councilman Garza would appreciate this, but on the, on the potential for economic development in this area, and the fact that by taking this over, as well as the easement, which we'll talk about later, but that it, there's more potential essentially for economic development because the easement as held by the county really was, I should say, has been used to prohibit because they wanted to maintain for future rain gardens and things of that nature. So I'm happy to see this happen.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. Councilmember Spadafor.
This is a different item to do with drains, but we are accepting, we're adding a sewer easement on the near sixty-two fifty South Cedar and five oh one East Edgewood Boulevard, I think Panera on the south side. In the nineteen eighties, when this area was built up, it was a common acceptance and standards to have the sewers privately owned. Now, as we look at parcelling out those lots, they have to conform with the new standards, which would require them to be publicly owned. This is the first step in owning those sewers and connecting those parcels to public sewer mains, and that is establishing the easement down there. So I would move the resolution.
All right, we have a resolution before us. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to reports from council committees. We have a report from the Committee on Public Safety Housing Update.
And as council remembers, when this was asked to be by me, be taken up by the Public Safety Committee, we had asked for a monthly report as to progress that was being made with that. So, Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, and I apologize. Past practice has been to ensure that there was an update in writing. Frankly, there's just not a tremendous amount to update folks on. So we wanted to focus on four areas that we had talked about with regard to the last update. The first would be the fee study, RFP, that we discussed extensively. Also, there was, actually, there's been two RFQP's for a consultant, for a top-down review of policies, procedures, things of that nature in co-compliance. Also, we know that there are a number of vacancies in co-compliance, everything from the manager to co-compliance officers to premise positions. And then lastly, we always want to talk about obviously the latest and greatest on red tag numbers, pink tag numbers, and the duration of these tags. As it pertains to the fee study, the RFP was completed, it was issued, and the contract was awarded to Manor Custerison. So at the current time, that project is actually underway. Economic Development and Planning, I actually got with Jordan Hankewitz earlier today. He said that Manor Custerison has been sitting down with folks, they've been reviewing documents, having conversations. The department hopes to have something to us concrete by October. As it pertains to the consultant for the top-down review, we've had some issues with this. So we actually, again, have issued two different or separate RFQP's. We have not had any bidders. We did have forty-five individuals open up, or I should say entities opened up the RFQP, and so we actually engaged directly a number of those to discuss, you know, issues and why folks are not essentially supplying bids. It's the scope of the work. It's significant. Folks are essentially referencing the fact that they don't have the capacity to take a project down like that. So at this time, we are looking at scope, potentially narrowing the scope, and we should be hopefully hearing back from the department soon. As it pertains to the co-compliance manager, I was told that the process is in the final stages and that an offer will be made imminently. I do not know who that individual is, but they do have somebody in mind. They did interview, I believe President Wood was part of that process. They applied, obviously, a scoring rubric, and again, a, an offer is imminent. And then lastly, this is probably the one that is a little bit most, I would say this is the most difficult to report back on. As it pertains to the red tags, the pink tags, and the duration of tags, Mr. Jordan Hankewitz did tell me that they noticed some irregularities in terms of some of the data. They investigated further, and then they did identify some inconsistencies in the way that they were querying, reporting the data. So they have actually pulled down, we long talked about this public dashboard, so the folks could access those numbers at any given time. They've actually pulled that down as of, I believe, Friday of last week, because again, there are a number of inaccuracies. So the numbers that we have been sharing, we do not believe probably at any time have been accurate. I want to, I do want to give Jordan and Mr. Nicholas Motry a little bit of grace in that you might recall that when we started to push this, and we really identified this as a crisis, they were just coming on board. So they didn't know what they didn't know. They have, in my opinion, done a tremendous amount of work to right the ship, and frankly, this is a ship that was allowed to steer, you know, a thousand nautical miles off course. And so they are working tremendously hard, but in the process, they are finding that there are issues with a number of processes internally, and they're working to fix. So with that being said, if there are any questions, I can certainly either work to answer those, or I can convey those to the appropriate folks within code for answers. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Councilmember Hussein?
Thank you for that update, Councilman Hussein. Sounds like a lot of work is being done. Relating to, I know that you were talking about the scope and the RFP, RFIs, you know, are we able to look at maybe multiple organizations so we don't lose, you know, the need to really evaluate the entire situation?
I think right now, frankly, everything is on the table. And so what I will do, or I'll commit to this body, is continuing to engage, obviously, Mr. Hankewitz and Mr. Motry. As they, as they discuss this, I think the other piece is, as they bring on a new co-compliance manager, that individual might be involved in some measure in those conversations. So I'll get to the latest and greatest soon as I can.
Yeah, fantastic, because my concern to the thing that you outlined is, you know, things have been going so far where we don't even know what's going on, and we don't have data. I really, you know, want to make sure that we analyze this entire, you know, every dimension and every area of it. Thank you.
I don't disagree.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Hussein.
Okay, we are to ordinances for introduction. We have Councilmember Brown introduce an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to amend chapter fourteen sixty-two of the Lansing Codified Ordinance as section fourteen sixty-two point zero three to bring the acreage limitation for total neighborhood enterprise zones in the city into conformity with state law. The ordinances read a first time by its title and refer to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, President Wood. Yes, we had the Lansing Economic Development Corporation come to our last Committee on Development and Planning to explain that in nineteen ninety-two, the state established under Act one forty-seven, the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone. This is a program that provides a tax incentive for the development rehabilitation of residential housing. The Act allows for the NEZ to contain up to fifteen percent of the total acreage of the local government unit. Currently, our city ordinance is written not to exceed one percent of the local units, and with the city having twenty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-five acres, that would allow for only two hundred and thirty-five acres. When Mr. Klein came, who was the vice president of LEDC, he confirmed that the city currently has approximately five hundred and fifty acres with twenty-three, twenty-four current zones, which the city attorney confirmed would be out of compliance with this current ordinance. And so we're looking to, they're looking to amend it to match the state according to the strong advisement of the City Attorney's Office to the state compliance of fifteen percent of our total acreage.
Okay, thank you. And you're moving the resolution to...
Yes.
Set the public hearing?
For August twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All those, are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously.
Next, Councilmember Wood introduced an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to amend chapter two forty of the Lansing Codified Ordinance as section two forty point zero two, section two forty point zero three, and section two forty point zero four in order to codify the role of the HRCS Advisory Board to make it consistent with the City of Lansing Charter, including five dash one oh six. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee of the Whole.
Councilmember Hussein.
Sure. So the public hearing would be set, if approved, tonight for August twenty-eighth at seven PM. With regard to the amendments, just very quickly, there are some amendments that define HRCS in several places, actually replaces the word department with HRCS, does clarify the role of HRCS and the HRCS Advisory Board as it pertains to the evaluation and assessment of basic human rights and the recommendation awards process for grants that address such rights. Makes clear that, as it pertains to the grant process, the advisory board does not make decisions, but rather makes recommendations. And then lastly, it charges HRCS with creating and presenting to the city attorney the non-conflict of interest form that each agency must sign prior to receiving grant funds. I just got a note passed to me, we will have the director of HRCS here at the public hearing, and not only for this, but the next few, the night of, sorry, the public hearing, to make a presentation to this body. So with that, I would move the resolution.
Okay, we, we have the, setting the first public hearing for, again, for August twenty-eighth. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, next we have Councilmember Wood introduce an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to amend chapter two seventy-three of the Lansing Codified Ordinance as section two seventy-three point zero one and section two seventy-three point zero four in order to clarify the role of the HRCS Advisory Board to make it consistent with the Lansing City Charter, including five dash one oh six. The ordinance is read first time by its title and referred to the Committee of the Whole.
Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, sorry. So again, the public hearing for this would be August twenty-eighth at seven PM, and there are a few amendments to speak to. First, the statement of purpose was significantly changed as part of this, to essentially clarify that the board is not to carry out, execute, or develop things such as community programs and instructions to educational partners on issues such as diversity. But again, rather to evaluate and recommend, it does strip them of their responsibility to examine reports of discrimination or prejudice and works, and to works, sorry, to address discriminatory practices within city government. And then these changes are kind of reflected in the wording of subsection point zero four. And speaking specifically to point zero four, board responsibilities, there are also changes regarding pamphlets, the protection of rights of all people employed within the city or through contract with the city, whereas the ordinance calls for the board to develop and provide counsel. If changed, it will call on them to review and evaluate. So again, that public hearing would be August twenty-eighth at seven PM.
Thank you. We have a motion before us. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, next Councilmember Wood introduce an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to repeal chapter two seventy-three, section two seventy-three point zero six of the Lansing Codified Ordinance as in order to clarify the role of the HRCS Advisory Board to make it consistent with the Lansing City Charter, including five dash one oh six. The ordinance is read first time by its title and refer to the Committee of the Whole.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yep. So again, this deals with a repeal. The public hearing would be August twenty-eighth at seven PM. As it pertains to, and we didn't speak specifically to this, but as it pertains to chapter two seventy-three point zero six, that section actually gave the Human Relations and Community Services Advisory Board the power to receive and examine complaints of discrimination or prejudice, and to conduct private or public hearings. In addition, the section empowered the board to issue a summary of its findings to the City Attorney's Office for enforcement if necessary. And lastly, there's a piece about the board being able to study the treatment and status of protected groups throughout the City of Lansing, as well as ways to improve human relations in the city. So again, if this is approved, this section would actually be repealed. With that, I would move the resolution.
Okay, and again, that's for the twenty-eighth. Do we have any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, and the final is Councilmember Wood introduce an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to repeal chapter two seventy-three, section two seventy-three point zero eight of the Lansing Codified Ordinance as in order to clarify the role of the HRCS Advisory Board to make it consistent with the Lansing City Charter, including five dash one oh six. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and refer to the Committee of the Whole.
Councilmember Hussein.
Okay, and this does in fact deal with the repeal of section two seventy-three point zero eight, correct?
Mm-hmm.
That was, okay. So here's what I'm going to do. The public hearing would be August twenty-eighth, again, seven PM. I'm going to punt a little bit here, because, and maybe I'm confused, but as I read this, particularly that section, and because we didn't have any, any explanation as part of our Committee of the Whole, I'm not understanding completely the reason for repealing this. So again, the, if approved, the resolution would set the public hearing for the twenty-eighth at seven PM, but I'm going to ask that the city attorney explain the repeal of this section for us.
Mr. City Attorney.
This was, this was a section that was recommended by the HRCS Director, proposing that those are administrative activities being conducted by the HRCS Department. That's basically the explanation.
Okay.
Sure. I'll move the resolution.
All right, so we have a motion on the resolution. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of setting the public hearing say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. I guess I am the only one voting. Okay, thank you.
I said aye.
Okay, all right. I just didn't hear anybody. My hearing aid wasn't up. I'm sorry.
Okay, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. That's the yellow sheet in the back. We'll give you about another minute to jump up and get one filled out with grace. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
And I would turn to Councilmember Hussein again.
Sure, I would move that. All items be considered read and full, and the appropriate referrals be made by you, President Wood.
All right, have a motion before us. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's see, I heard that. I turned it up. I heard it. Thank you.
Okay, we have items from the clerk minutes of boards and commissions.
Placed on file.
Liquor license, CP Lansing Red Cedar LLC.
Committee of the Whole and placed on file.
Liquor license, Bonnie's Lansing LLC.
City operations.
From the mayor, ten items relative to orders to make, save, or demolish for the following five addresses, sixteen sixteen Venrose, five zero one six Connors, thirty-three oh one Turner, one two three two Pompton, and fourteen oh two Marquette.
Those all go to public safety.
And grant acceptance, protecting my Michigan pension grant for the employees' retirement system.
Ways and Means an Internal Auditor.
Z eight, two items relative to Z eight, twenty twenty-three, four fifteen, and four twenty-one, Calumazoo Street, rezoning to Residential Adaptive Reuse District.
Development and planning.
Two items relative to SLU two of twenty twenty-three, same addresses to authorized sheltered care facility.
Development and planning.
Traffic controller, twenty-three dash seventeen, remove the traffic signal and install Always Stop at North Grand River and Willow Street.
City operations.
Pointing the hearing officer and setting a hearing on the cabaret license.
Committee of the Whole and placed on file.
Obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate revocation for Summit Street Development Property at seven hundred May Street requested by the certificate holder.
Development and planning.
The appointment of Kathleen Johnson Colati to the Historic District Commission.
Development and planning.
Social district, add CP Lansing Red Cedar LLC to the Red Cedar Social District.
City operations.
Sole source purchase, Public Service Department request for Kennedy Industries as the vendor for Flight Vertical Dry Pit Pump.
Ways and Means an Internal Auditor.
And sole source purchase, Police Department request for law enforcement, Michigan Law Enforcement Training Associates as the vendor for training, consulting, and advising on legal aspects of police policy practice and law.
Ways and Means an Internal Auditor.
We are to motion of excused absence.
Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, I would move for excused absences for both Councilwoman Spitzley and Councilman Garza.
Have a motion before us. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously.
Remarks by council members.
Any council member remarks? Seeing none?
Remarks by the mayor?
Mayor Shore? Mayor sure? All right.
Then we are to public comments on city government related matters. Our first speaker is Albert Roper, followed by Daniel Arnold. And speakers have up to three minutes to address the council. Is Mr. Roper here? Okay, Daniel Arnold, followed by Loretta Stanaway. Daniel?
There he is.
Hello, everybody, this is Daniel Arnold, Facebook guy smiling, good to see you all. It's been a little while since I've come out to city council, really happy to see everybody, and you know, I get to interact a little bit with councilmember Brown lately, and that was really appreciative, just seeing all the excitement and what's going on in his office, it's just really appreciated. I'm an eight-year housing voucher recipient, I, I'm a disability income recipient, and I visit 10 government properties five days a week to speak to local state federal security police and encourage their profession, visit vulnerable populations to homeless addicts, ex-offenders, mental health consumers, taking a public safe, a public speaking class this semester, and I volunteer at my church in the children's ministry and welcome ministry, former safety. What I, I guess what I came to say is I'm looking to do more with my life. I'd love to speak with you guys and the Board of Police Commissioners tomorrow with the chief and everything, and I really love being in Lansing, being involved with multiple churches and stuff, and you know, getting to know the community, and great things like Ruder Park, I wasn't able to make it out, but they, they have like their feeding in the park and ministry to the homeless, it's really, it's really beautiful, see a lot of stuff that goes on in our city, and I'm just at a place where I'm looking to do something more meaningful with my time, just something more, even more than what I'm doing already. And so I'm just looking for an opportunity to invest five to 10 hours a week in the area of police service, juvenile detention, mental hospital, mental health court, something along those lines of kind of peer support, mentoring opportunity, and so I'm just kind of telling everybody here, everybody in council, everyone in the city, that I'm looking for a serious opportunity, I've been in trouble with the law, but I, I'm the number one fan of law enforcement now, I, you know, I've had difficulties mentally, but I'm thriving mentally, it's just, I'm really thankful to everybody in our community and our churches and, and all your support, everybody, so that's what I'm gonna say, yeah, is, you know, I'm the type of person that, you know, I get opportunities to, one of my friends, he was having a mental health situation, so he's homeless, walking down the street or whatever, and he's like, oh, I need to go back to the hospital, and I'm like, well, let me take you to my apartment, fix you some coffee, sit you down, got out, we called up crisis services, and he talked at length with crisis services about his situation, and then he wanted to get dispatched, so, you know, I called non-emergency dispatch, police arrived, saw him, came up to my apartment, and just went out on the balcony, and the police just sat with him and just talked, stood there and just talked to him and counseled him and got him, got him the help he needed, hopefully, I just, I want every opportunity I can to serve, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, next is Loretta Stanaway, followed by Stephen Haddon.
Okay, there's been some conversation in the last several days about a proposal to do a bunch of new buildings here in the city, and on the whole, I think they sound pretty good, I think that most of them I could probably support pretty well. One concern I have is the talk about a building being taller than the Comerica Bank building. If memory serves me, and I could be wrong here, but if memory serves me, there is a restriction on heights in buildings within a zone around the Capitol that would prohibit anything tall enough to block the view of the Capitol from any direction. So I think that it would behoove whoever's going to be pursuing this opportunity to look at that and see if that restriction is still in place and would it impact these buildings. The other thing I found interesting was these builders, this developer was talking about penthouses, concierge services, dedicated spaces for meetings and events, and a library and a convenience store on site, and I'm just wondering, you know, where have we heard those suggestions before? Did we hear them in pertaining to City Hall from this diocese? Perhaps we did, if people were listening. Second, the person who presented tonight for the Unity House, I think that sounds again like a good idea, I have two thoughts though, off the top of my head, nobody discussed parking, and I'm not certain that that neighborhood area can support $50,000 income jobs, so those should be things that get examined a little bit more closely. Also, I'm going to continue to harp on the idea that we did not know we were approving moving a fire station to the new SWAC location, so if there's any potential for reversing that decision, I'm going to continue to bring that to your attention right up to the last possible minute. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, next we have Stephen Haddon, followed by Nicholas Sandy.
Good afternoon, council. I'm here on a concerned matter in my neighborhood, I live in Marsh Scott subdivision, it's a very nice neighborhood, but the last few months, I noticed a lot of cars parked on the side of the one-car garages at the homes, I noticed a lot of small boats in the backyards of some of these houses, I noticed a lot of residential homes that have more than two adults living there, I was wondering if there's a code of compliance man that I could see or meet, because I don't think that's right to have two to three families, I understand the situation in Lansing, housing situation, and these are not teenagers living with their folks, these are adults, and there's a lot of cars in the driveway, and a lot of cars are parked on the side of the garages, and once I said, the boats too in the backyard, so my concern is addressing this issue if they're not in compliance with the city.
It's your opportunity to talk, sir, so we can have somebody meet you after the council.
Yes, I think Councilman Garza is my representative.
Okay, well, we'll have councilmember Hussein talk to you, since councilmember Garza isn't here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, next is Nicholas Sandy, followed by David Sterrett.
Thank you, this is again Nicholas Sandy from Second Ward, the old Ever neighborhood. I'm here specifically to talk about the mayor's leadership fund email that he was, that he sent a few weeks ago. I am, I've, I've spoken about this before, but I'll say this again, what the mayor did with the whole email thing and the endorsement thing, well, there's nothing illegal about endorsements, it was clearly unethical of him to use that email in such a way, and also, it, it's, it just, what's a better way of saying it? It just showed his favoritism towards some candidates over others, is all I'm saying. And to say this about email, it was very reprehensible of him to do that, and the fact that his previous email, he used a logo that looked identical to the city logo, that's basically just appropriating a government's symbol for your organization is just, that's just reprehensible in all, and jury's out whether or not he actually used city funds to start his leadership fund, if he did, that is a clear violation of state law, since I'm pretty sure state law forbids that, and it's also probably a violation of federal law, and I know that the Department of Justice has already, has already got him a few times, so that, so I wonder if that's going to, if they're gonna get him again on that. And adding on to that, that incident where someone was wrongfully arrested just because they happened to wear the same clothing as the suspect, or at least identical clothing, weird he has to apologize for that when similar incidents where people who have also been arrested on flimsy charges, they, of course, he, I don't think he's ever apologized for that, I, he's never really made a statement for that, so for him to apologize for this incident now when he's had a history of that is just mind-boggling, and this shows that he's very corrupt, and this is something that, and with the whole email thing and the, and the clothing mistake, the clothing mistake, as I should do that in major quotations, he should consider resignation as an option for, because of, because he is so morally bankrupt and extremely corrupt, too much so to even lead this city.
Thank you, next is David Sterrett, followed by Stan Shuck.
Greetings, Andy, Chris, Mrs. Wood, the rest of the council members, I'm David Sterrett, resident six sixty-six years in Lansing, I talked funny, I've lost my teeth though, coldly, and a UAW member for forty-seven years. I'm here to speak on behalf of the homeless, which I am, along with the people at the Abbott House that's helped us stay in hotels and waiting to get some sex tonight, we've got a catastrophic event coming, at the end of August, two to three hundred people will be forced into the street, you need to contact Susan at the Abbott House, she is the executive director, they need your help, if not declaring a state of emergency, our homeless that don't have a voice. I've been driven by a dear friend of mine, passed away Bob LaPrada, used to be a Dr. Lemni for Michigan State, Knights of Columbus, director of the Diocese Assistant Program with Catholic charities, so they've turned me into a homeless advocate, we need your help now, and we're gonna need a parking lot for porta-potties, there's gonna be three hundred homeless people living in their cars. That's all I got to say, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next is Stan Shuck, followed by Jody Washington.
Good evening, Stan Shuck, South Lansing, I was at the city operations meeting this afternoon, where Mark spoke about the chip ceiling catastrophe and what they're gonna do, his list of the streets with damage was very short, as a matter of fact, Mr. Garza's area was not on that list, he texted me as I was sitting here tonight, saying, well, Andy knows, Andy knows that my area is bad, so they're gonna do it, and I reassured him, well, you weren't on the list, and there's a lot of streets that weren't on that list, there's a lot of streets in my neighborhood that weren't on that list, not necessarily on my side of MLK, but Lorraine and a few streets closer to Pleasant Grove, all, all real bad, so, you know, I hope people call in, and I hope you'll look at that before you comprise your final list of people that are calling O and M and complaining about that, so they're included at least for looking at, at what they got. Andy spoke tonight about the compost and stuff, and I want to tell you something, those seasonal positions, a lot of people don't know this, it's kind of a hidden secret, but those compost seasonals, they made forty to fifty thousand dollars a year, remember one made fifty-four thousand dollars a year, or one, one year, with the overtime and the fall, and the reason that they're leaving is, like you said, they pay more at McDonald's, but they don't pay more at McDonald's when they're doing the job that they was hired for, they're only paid that when they're not on the compost job, so if you knock that down to fifty percent, there's part of your problem, it's an invented situation, they're doing this willfully, in my opinion, and that's why you can't get anybody, because they take them off of that truck, they take them out of the routes, they pay them thirteen bucks an hour instead of the twenty-two, but when you add up the fifty-four thousand dollars a year, forty thousand dollars a year that those seasonals were making, that's a little bit of money, it's not, it's not the wages you would make on thirteen, thirteen bucks an hour, so there's quite a bit of money there, and like you said, you got a full-timer on there now, well, who's doing his job? Because he's not from the refuse or recycle or compost department, he's from another entity, another part of the Public Service Department, I know who he is, I've talked to him week, or bi-weekly now, but also, the issue of the odor, 1206, your ordinance can't exceed the property lines, you get fifteen, twenty bags of moldy stuff, and you'd have to set, put it in the middle of your yard not to smell it at the property lines, so you're, you know, you're forcing people to be in violation of your own ordinance. This whole thing i- is bad, you can't go back and hire them jobs and do that work, so that money that wasn't used as, unless it was intended, you can't, you can't go back and do that, that's our money, it's not a rainy day fund, that's our money.
Next we have Jody Washington, followed by Kelsey Briann.
Thank you, Jody Washington, East Side, I'm gonna start this by saying I am the wife of a retired state police officer, my husband gave thirty-one years of his life to the police department, so I have the absolute utmost respect for police officers, and I know firsthand the underbelly of society that my husband had to endure, and that he still suffers from today, it affects their health, it affects their families, so I'm beginning that by saying, he gave thirty-one years of his life, and yes, he was a black police officer. Having said that, I am mortified with what happened with that twelve-year-old child in our city, there was absolutely no excuse for that, he was crying, his father was there, he did not need to be coughed in, he certainly did not need to be placed in the back of a police car, they could have stood there peacefully with the father who was advocating for his child and that child, and waited for that officer to show up and just say he's not the kid, this, I can't even imagine that a social worker is going to get this child over, and I will tell you, over twenty years ago, our brown child could not drive the streets after ten o'clock without getting pulled over, our brown child was pulled out of his car, not once, but twice by gunpoint, our brown child could not come through a parking ramp in East Lansing without being pulled over, we had to tell him that he had to call us every single time he got stopped by the police, because he was treated horrifically, because he was brown and he was young, and I am horrified that in the past twenty-plus years, there has been no difference, and I would dare say, some would say, in the past two hundred years, we are still seeing the same thing, it's got to change, we have to have smart programs, we have to stop the microaggressions, we have to stop the discrimination, we need to get this together, our children are dying, our children are being profiled, enough is enough, and as I said, I have the utmost respect for police officers, but this has got to stop, and this HRCS killing of the entire advisory board is just another step in that direction, it was the only safeguard we had to discrimination, and I am the reason that you are reviewing it, because when I read the ordinance, I saw the teeth that we had to protect people, and when I brought that forward, now it's all being pulled off, and Joe Boone literally had the nerve to come to one of our meetings with the changed ordinance and said this is effective immediately, he never had the authority to do that, I would think you all would really rethink the decision on this HRCS board.
Thank you.
Thank you, next is Kelsey Briann, followed by Norma Bauer.
You know, as I was prepping for my comments tonight, I was reading the, the public post about, from the city and from the mayor and police, and the phrase "the wrong place and wrong time" was used. That's correct, the police were there at the wrong place at the wrong- wrong time. And you know who else was there at the wrong time in the wrong place? The knee on Anthony Hulon's neck, who died here in this jail in twenty-twenty, months before George Floyd died, or sorry, was murdered. And then when that protest was happening, we saw Andy Shore with the knee down and a fist up, knowing that he covered up that murder. And so I just am like deeply, deeply disturbed, and also just how embarrassing that this is why Lansing was in the news. I just, I'm just beside myself. And as a white person, I get to walk around without that fear. And I'm glad that you acknowledge the trauma, because that's true, but you need to do the work to acknowledge the trauma of our city. This is not a one-off incident. It's not. And I'm actually glad that you showed up. This is the longest time I've seen you in a council meeting, so thank you for not hiding in your ivory tower. But this has got to stop. We need to have accountability, not just what happened, for, for the years this has been continuing. And I'm a granddaughter of a state detective who, as far as we know, is one of the most decorated state detectives. He did undercover shit. I'm sorry, I apologize for pronunciations. He did undercover work. You're lucky I'm not allowed to swear. However, I just want to point to this program that's in Portland that is universally loved among the variety of citizens, including the police and citizens across political spectrum. It's called Kahoots. It is in Portland, Oregon. It is a great program that is often used in research and reference to defunding the police or whatnot. I would highly recommend you look into it. But this is a systemic issue and not a one-off. And so I would just encourage a true member, Anthony Hulon, who died in the jail underneath the city hall in twenty-twenty, and you, City Attorney, are the person who told people they couldn't talk about it. My understanding is that you are on the board of the Crisis Prevention Center. So it's not surprising, considering you do not consider bodily autonomy to be a concern of yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Norma Bauer, followed by Scott Cobb.
Norma Bauer, thank you for your service. You are blessed or cursed with my presence here tonight because of a city manager in Escanaba, Michigan. Escanaba's a lot like Lansing in a way, because it's got, it owns its own utility. It's the shopping district for miles and miles around. There's a grand total of fourteen thousand people in Lan- in Escanaba, slightly smaller, like maybe ten percent of the population in Lansing. It only operate, operates in one county, and obviously Lansing occupies three counties. So I don't envy Mr. Sverka there, trying to look at a city charter that hasn't been changed in, what, twenty-four years now? Because it's been amended a few times since then, and you gotta follow through all of the different changes to figure out what the heck does that say now, and how many other changes do we have to make? We have a choice. And a lot of the things that came up tonight at the Committee of the Whole Meeting in items twenty-five to twenty, twenty-six through twenty-nine have a lot to do with the vote on the city charter coming up in November. And based on my experience and the way Jim Hauser ran it as a city manager, he, he would take the people, the kind of people who come to your constituent services coffees, and he'd talk to us. I was the only one who showed up at city council meetings, because they don't have a university up there. They don't have, you know, nice lectures, and they didn't have an orchestra or an opera or any of those things that I really liked back in New York State where I came from. But I was so bored, I went to city council meetings. I was the only one. So he recruited me to serve on all the different boards and commissions, zoning boards of appeal, and the, that was my timer.
No, you still have a minute?
Yeah, tax increment financing, it really, and eventually I got named to state citizen review boards. And it's a great way to get people really having a voice in government, learning how government works. And so I really hope that a lot of people will vote for the, the change, well, it's not, it's not, not voting for a change, it's voting for, should we review the city charter? And should we name a commission to look at it and get some advice? Okay, it costs money. Well, it costs money to do things this way, and a lot of us don't like the way money's being spent right now. So that's the main thing about that. And I would ask you, please, to talk to your colleague, Councilmember Spitzley, because she's not been showing up at the committee, Ad-Hoc Committee on Homes, homelessness or homeless housing. And, you know, she made a commitment, and we don't really, I mean, I don't think we've had a forum in that committee for the three meetings that I've been to recently. So those are my three items. So.
Thank you. Next, we have Scott Cobb, followed by Erica Lynn.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name's Scott Cobb. And for it has been brought to my attention, the atrocities that have been perpetrated against the poor and the homeless of the city. For they have, they are told they cannot be here nor there, but given no other opportunity in which to go. For the shelters are full and they are left outside to survive whatever the weather may be. But there are many abandoned apartment complexes, buildings and red-tagged homes that could give them protection that they seek and desperately need and deserve. For how is it that we have laws and for animal cruelty, leaving pets outside in the elements, but we turn a blind eye to the inhumane way we treat our fellow brothers and sisters? For the Lord God said, "For he that have an earth to hear, let him hear; and he that forbeareth, let him forbear." For God is in control, and for God himself has placed a burden upon these poor and the homeless to test each and every one of us to do what is right in the sight of our heavenly Father. In Acts twenty thirty-five, Jesus states, "For I have showed you all things, how that laboring ye ought to support the weak, and remember the words of the Lord Jesus. How is it more, how it is more blessed to give than to receive?" In One Peter four eight, "And above all things have fervent charity among yourselves, for charity will cover a multitude of sins. For the Father will judge each and every one of us according to the works, and how we treat, support the least of our brethren." For in One Timothy six eighteen and nineteen states, "They that do good works, ready to distribute, willing to communicate, laying it up in store for themselves, a good foundation against the time to come, that they may lay hold of eternal life." For this issue is soon to get far worse than you can imagine, for we are about to enter the great tribulation. With inflation on the rise, more and more will be forced out of their homes and into the streets. For Proverbs fourteen thirty-one clearly states, "He that oppretheth the poor reproacheth his maker, but he that honoreth him has mercy on the poor." For in Luke four eighteen, "The Spirit of the Lord is upon me, because he has anointed me to preach to the broken-hearted, to preach deliverance to the captives, and recovering the sight to the blind, to set at liberty them that are bruised." For Proverbs twenty-one thirteen clearly states, "If a man shuts his ears to the cry of the poor, he too will cry out and not be answered." For he that layeth up treasures for himself is not rich towards God. For I call each, upon each and every one of you here today, and those who may hear these words later, to open up your hearts and do what is right in the sight of our Father in heaven, to help all those who are in need of food and shelter, for this is God's will of each and every one of us. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Erica Lynn, followed by Farhan Sheikh Omar.
Hello again, Erica Lynn. I wanted to talk a little bit more about the public hearing that was just set on the changes to the HRCS Board's duties. And I just want to again acknowledge that the changes, again, they have a very, very real potential to completely take away any ability for the community to have a somewhat objective and community-based route for addressing these kinds of issues and complaints. So if the goal, and it should have been when the review was done, but it absolutely should be now, is to maintain the relevance, the effectiveness and the impact of this board to address community needs and concerns, then there would have been clear efforts in those proposed revisions, especially regarding the discrimination, the prejudice, things like that, to focus on preserving that board's purpose of providing guidance, recommendations and support to the community. But most importantly, they also provide us the liaison between that kind of support guidance from community, from us, to you all. So that's extremely important, and it does not seem that there was a concerted effort. So we now look to you, by way of this public hearing, because you are the balance that we need to be able to count on to thoroughly review every single aspect of every change, because the implications as they are are very concerning. So that is where we're looking to you to, again, it's not like an up-down type situation. It should be a very thorough review of what those changes are, how they came about, why they came about, and what implications they have on the very existence of this board. I wanted to talk a little bit about the incident that just happened because, I mean, as we all know, people have already talked about this, this was not a one-off issue. We have got to stop pretending like it is. We've got to stop with this Lansing is not as bad mindset, because we understand that between two thousand nineteen and now, we had a sixteen-year-old girl that was struck seventeen times in the thigh in twenty seconds. That video went viral, that made the national news. Anthony Hulon was murdered by LPD on the floor of the jail in this building, you know, screaming that he couldn't breathe. That same year, a man was beaten on Baker Street that ultimately was the victim of a fight that had happened, and LPD had to fire an officer for being unprofessional, aggressive, and because he escalated the situation, causing other officers to use higher levels of force. Just the beginning of this year, a thirty-five-year-old man was shot and killed by LPD. So we've had a lot of dangerous situations, we've had a lot of dangerous chases, we have videos of rights being violated, stop and frisk situations. We understand that these are not one-off situations, but we continue to value the PR nature of the way that we govern the city, and this is what we get. And it's only going to get worse, because we value how we look more than how we actually are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Farhan Sheikh Omar, followed by Mike Lynn.
Good evening, Farhan Sheikh Omar. I want to address two things tonight, one being the entertainment business. It's on Logan Square. You know, we've had over three hundred shootings in the city. Many of those shootings have taken place in front of businesses, near businesses. And now, one time, did this mayor or this city attorney or the city council have, have suggested to go after those businesses? And the fact that you guys are going after a black-owned business is very shameful, especially when you know that we've had three hundred shootings in the city. That's one. Two, our police department. Andy, it's not just one individual, one child that was traumatized this past few days. It's an entire city. On that day, if you were wearing a white shirt and green shorts, you were a target, especially if you were a black person. It could have been me, it could have been Jeff Mr. Brown, it could have been Brian, it could have been Michael Lynn, it could have been anybody. Your police officers were looking for an adult, but they ended up handcuffing a child. How does that make sense? As a grown man, as a father, how does that make sense to you? That the suspect is an adult, but they ended up handcuffing a child. For your police department to say that it was at the wrong place at the wrong time, where is the right place for black people in this city? This child was taking out trash from his house. Where is the right place for us? Why is that always an excuse for your police department? Wrong place, wrong time, a mistake. It's not a mistake. We're hiring adults to protect the city, to serve the city, and if they can't differentiate between an adult and a child, maybe they don't need a gun. They don't need a gun. A lot of people have died under your watch, Andy. A lot of shootings have taken place since you became mayor. Three hundred this year. Over, close to a dozen people that have been killed. Last year, over twenty people. The year before that, another twenty people. The only reason why you're going after this black-owned business is because we made CNN and NBC. And the only reason why your police department and you are apologizing for what happened to this black child is because you guys made CNN. Good Morning America, the entire country's talking about you. We've, we've been trying to warn you about this whole situation for years, and you've ignored us. Now we've made national news. Lansing is on the map. Like we have the spotlight on us, but for the wrong reason. I hope you're proud. I really hope you're proud of your administration, of your city attorney and of this city, because we're not. Thanks.
Thank you. And finally, tonight, we have Mike Lynn.
So just a real quick update. I put in the finances for the FOIA request on August first. Today is now the fourteenth, so I believe they're way past their deadline, even with ten business days in there. I called today and talked to Matthew Staples. He told me, I'm working on it. And you can go through the process of appealing if you need more time, or if you want to get it, I don't know what it, the point is, why do I have to go through that? Why is it okay for the city to just violate rights, things that are written in law, constitutional rights, just repeatedly in that I have to go through a process? I want the FOIA request when it was due. They asked for a ten-day extension, they got it. They asked for what they asked for, I gave it to them, money, whatever the case was. I want the FOIA like tomorrow. And I think that you guys can press that issue. Second to that, when we talk about violation of constitutional rights, they've been being violated for, for years now. And I've been, I've been really receiving all of these complaints, the Fourth Amendment violations, you know, due process violations and all of these different things I've been receiving. And people ask, why don't we go and like make complaints? But who do they make complaints to now? Because the person who was receiving the complaints is now the HRCS Deputy Director. So that's just how things move. Like, as soon as we get to a point where like, okay, we're gonna start making complaints. And I've sent people to that woman, and she was as rude as any cop that came up to you on the streets. I've called her, and she's been as rude to me. So the complaint process is just terrible. Again, why HRCS is having that complaint position in, in place is, is, is correct and needed. But what I want to get to is, last week, they did a press conference, and the mayor stood up in tough-on-crime conversation and talked about how Lansing is no different from everywhere else, if you do this or that, or whatever the case is, and brought this whole thing, because he was called on on social media about the gun violence. And then our city attorney, or excuse me, our county attorney stood up and said, if you're thirteen years old in this city, we will arrest you, we will charge you as an adult. And then we wonder why a twelve-year-old gets yanked up like an adult in the streets? This is what you guys are telling the police department. This is what the police chief sat up there and said, if you want to lambast us in the media, and you want to talk about us for political fame, fame and, and all of these different things, why don't you join us? How nasty of that was, right, sitting right next to his boss. How is that helping community relations? Then when y'all snatch up a kid, then we say, community relations are our top number one goal. How is that? When just a week prior to that, you was telling everybody your kid. Now, I was sitting there watching that, and I got my, my youngest is twenty years old, and I was thinking, damn, to be a parent of a thirteen-year-old kid, when the county prosecutor stands there, the police chief stands there, and the mayor says, we don't care, we charge your kid as an adult, they going to prison. This is what's being told to the police officers out here. I'm sure their roll call tells you, anybody that looks like this is a danger. We got kids killing kids out here, we all recognize that. But everybody, this is a hundred and twelve thousand people in this city, we're talking about maybe twenty people out here committing violent crimes. And we're setting a precedence for the whole entire black community, that they're all criminals and drug dealers and killers? That's scary as hell. But the fact that we just are able to violate rights the way that we do without any type of accountability is crazy to me. So much more to be said, but thank you.
Thank you.
Just for the public, we do have a Committee of the Whole Meeting next Monday at five thirty. And then our next council meeting will be on the twenty-eighth, and we will have a Committee of the Whole before that, and a council meeting on the twenty-eighth. So with that, we are adjourned.